Devin Cox and Robert Peterson, I believe, are both on online. They're from Entry Point. They've been very important to the building of this master plan. So this master plan is a request from City Council at our November meeting. To give you a little bit of background, especially for Councilmember Machesik, because he was not here at that time. We, in 2018, determined that broadband and access to the Internet is an essential service. And in 2019, we had some discussions surrounding the implementation of the Rapid Broadband Fiber Utility. At that time, we made some determinations as far as build times are concerned. If you recall, we discussed a five-, seven-, and ten-year build-out plan. I believe we settled on the ten-year build-out, which is approximately 300 homes annually. And then there were some requests from City Council for a more defined marketing plan, a rollout plan. In other words, something that we identified the areas of the community that we would be expecting to target as we go forward. I built that out to about six years. It's included in your packet. There's also a map there for you. And then a marketing, or I'm sorry, some information about a beta-testing neighborhood. If you recall, we talked about a 15- to 20-home beta-testing neighborhood. This would be a way for us to prove things like quality of the network connection, overall usage of speed, usability and performance. In other words, during high-use times or low-use times, how the network performs. Gives us an opportunity to design plans for managing congestion and traffic. Obviously, it gives us really good information about the installation costs, as well as the O&amp;M costs that are associated with running the network. And marketing would be sort of an add-on to that. In the beta-testing phase, we would only market to a very small section of the community. We can talk a little bit about that. It's also part of the master plan. And then that marketing plan would expand out to the entire community going forward. Some of the other items that were mentioned that were items of concern in our November meeting was one of the items that was brought up. I believe Councilman Sowers brought up. He was concerned that we didn't have anybody from an ISP who had mentioned that they were interested in being part of this. Since that time, we've talked to both Serenga, who is now a partner with us in the DUC occupancy that we signed a month or two back, as well as Wilderness Wireless is very excited to be part of this. Wilderness Wireless expressed an interest in not only being an ISP, but also if there were opportunities to lease some dark fiber, unused fiber that we would have. They'd be interested in that, as well as potentially providing additional coverages in areas where it may not work to provide actual fiber to a home. Say there was one house at the very end of a long distance out, maybe like the Simplot House. I mean, not that we wouldn't want to do that, but just as an example. They would be able to additionally partner with us to provide some of the wireless access for homes like that. The master plan additionally contains a community engagement plan, as well as the project partners, and then some financial considerations and legal considerations that are outlined in that. I'm hoping everybody's had a chance to read all of those different bits and pieces. And then I'd like to discuss the steps going forward. But first, I'd like to see if Council has any questions for myself or for the Entry Point consultants.
Thanks, Chris. So, Council, questions so far with just the initial rollout? Tom?
Not at this time.
Mike?
None, thank you.
Melanie?
No questions right now.
Colby?
Nothing so far.
I'm tracking you, Chris. No questions from me, so keep on going.
Okay. I don't know how you would like me to proceed. I guess the first thing I'd like to do is talk about, I think one of the big things from the November meeting was the rollout plan. And maybe I can share my desktop here and show you the rollout plan itself. Sorry, I'm not very good with technology. Are you all seeing the plan itself?
Yes.
So, the first part of the project is a residential pilot program. When you look at the larger map that's included in your packet, this is labeled as phases 1A and 1B. So, the 1A encompasses basically this orange section between Davis and Alpine, a little bit on the far side of Alpine there. This section contains about 35 homes. It was identified for several reasons. The first reasons being that it is a primarily full-time, year-round type of homes there. It has good location, as far as it's already on the backbone that runs down Thompson Avenue there. You can see that in green there. It also is close to City Hall, so for troubleshooting purposes, that's convenient for us. And it's sort of a workforce housing type of thing. It's a lot of people that work here full-time, year-round. My hope is to hit between 50% and 60% of that neighborhood. Included in your packet is a letter from one of the homeowners there that has expressed interest in being a part of the pilot program. It is, there are some logistics with figuring out how we would actually manage, not manage that pilot program, manage the financial aspect of that pilot program. It's my proposal that the homeowners are offered free Internet service as part of their willingness to be our testers, and that they would be, that the installation would be at no charge during the portion of the testing program. The design, as you see, turns to the red area, which is approximately 450 homes surrounding it. And so, my proposal would be to capture the homes in the test pilot as part of the first LID. Is that, am I being clear with that? In other words, we would say this program was for eight months. During the term of the eight months, they would be provided with fiber to the home and Internet services at no cost. Once we start with our first LID, then they would be part of the LID and then would pay their installation costs for the home, and then would transition to normal Internet service provider costs as well.
And could you summarize your estimate of what the monthly cost would be for those two things?
There's technically three parts to the monthly cost. The answer, yes, I can. There is the Internet connectivity, which is the part that actually connects you out to the Internet itself. There is the fiber connection of the home to the backbone. And there is the backbone, or the actual fiber utility itself, that the city bills for. Each, in my estimation, each of those is approximately 40, I'm sorry, $15 a month.
Yeah, that's what I remember. You're still thinking that. So, the pilot study, you say it goes really well, and the people decide they want to get on board with you after the eight months and become part of that first LID. They might be experiencing three costs of $15 each.
Yes, it's my estimation that, so it varies slightly from neighborhood to neighborhood because it's a matter of, it's a function of the overall LID. And so, that's why you want to have more people who are, the more people who join, the lower the install cost is shared amongst those people in the LID. So, it varies between $45 and $50, but yes. At the end of the day, or at the end of the test period, they would expect to pay approximately $45 a month, and that is $15 or so cheaper than anything you can get currently in McCall. If you look at the market analysis that's included, Cable One is the, would be the closest, or Sparklight, rather, would be the closest competitor. And their offering is 60-plus dollars for 100 meg. We remember, we are hoping to offer 1,000 meg, or gig speeds.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for reminding us. Yeah, I just lost track of that. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah. Moving forward, we would then do the Local Improvement District. Again, if you remember from our discussions earlier, my target is 60% of the homes in a neighborhood, or an area that are members of the Local Improvement District. Each of the colored areas on your map represents approximately 450 homes. And if we hit 60% of those homes, that is 300 homes that we're installing. My hope is that we will go, that that number will be much higher. But that's really the number that brings us in at the $15 per month for that connection charge. Any questions about the basic program with regard to either the residential pilot and/or the first LID?
Yeah, let's pause there and let me poll the Council. Tom, any questions on those two items?
I think, I think we're kind of going on right track. I'm not super fan of the redundancy of services that will be available in this one area, which would be Sparklight, Frontier, or whatever it's called now, and this program also. And I'd really like to see about 100 letters from people in the neighborhood that want this service. That would really put me over the edge with this potential 60% thing. But, I mean, it's a program that's going to be needed as our Internet gets swallowed up and we grow. So, you know, we're going to have to grow in a direction.
And I understand your perspective on that. I think that the thing to remember is that we're not actually being redundant in this area. We are creating effectively a utility that allows us to offer transport to get to the Internet. We would partner with those existing providers, as well as additional providers, in order to offer the services that are faster, that are more future-proof. Ideally, they're more redundant, they're cleaner, so to speak, as far as your Internet connectivity is concerned. And you're, we're not, importantly, we're not competing at all with anybody in a neighborhood, even if there are already existing services there. We are just offering a better level of transport, is what it comes down to. We're offering tomorrow's technology in fiber to the home, which is different than what any of the incumbent providers currently offer. They offer you copper to the home, which has its inherent challenges. Is that a little bit more clear, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, it's still a triplification of service. And yes, it's a better service. That's a given. But, yeah, I think we've discussed this. You know, it's a five, you know, whatever it is, a five-wire connection, a cable-wire connection, and now a fiber connection, you know. And, you know, it's, some people are extremely happy with their Sparklight service, and that's going to be hard to, you know, hard to say, "Hey, we're going to experiment with this program." So, I mean, it's, you know, like I said, it's a good program, and it's going to move forward. I'm just concerned with the marketability.
I think that's, the important takeaway is that this product would give you more speed at a lower cost. Remember, we're trying to, one of the goals is to lower household, overall household costs. So, even if, you can like Sparklight, and I use Sparklight, and I think they're fantastic. The idea is that this would offer you more speed at a lower cost.
Are there areas in town that have no or horrible service that have been considered?
Oh, absolutely, yes. I mean, my goal, my goal at the end of this project would be to effectively cover, I mean, you know, in a perfect world, I'd cover 100% of the homes contained within city limits. So, it would, it's, at the end of the 10 years, we hit about 3,000 homes, which is about 6,000, or, I'm sorry, it's about 60% of the existing homes. But I don't see the project ending at that point. I think it continues on, you know, hitting those areas that are a little bit more sparse, sparsely populated and things like that. At that point, it also, you know, it's generating some significant revenue that helps to pray those costs.
All right, thanks.
Mike, questions for Chris?
I don't have any questions for Chris. I think I got a pretty good handle on it, and I really appreciate everything that he's doing.
Thank you. Melanie?
So, I don't have any questions for Chris, but I do want to say, for the record, that, you know, I live in this area, although my portion of Davis is not covered. And that makes me really sad, because the actual ability to get service in that area of town seems to be like a dead zone. It's like a hole. And I think you saw it from reading Matt Caldwell's letter. It's terrible over there, and anything we can do to get some service would be great, which is why I'm sitting at my office right now and not at my home.
Thanks, Melanie. Colby?
Yeah, I'm sitting in the Local Improvement District, number one, at home, on the Internet. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
So, I guess, kind of going back to like the, beyond the test area when we get into local improvement. One, so would people theoretically be able to pay upfront, like the connection fee, and then their monthly fee would then only include the city, the maintenance fee, as it were, and then the ISP?
Absolutely, you have that choice both ways. You can choose to finance it or pay it out of pocket.
And so, that number would be based on how many people in the Local Improvement District take it, or is that going to be a set number?
It's a function of the number of people in a Local Improvement District that take it. So, you know, each, if you get to 70% versus 60%, that total amount, number, it goes down because you have shared, you have obviously the shared costs of installation.
So, I guess, you know, say someone in this district initially doesn't take it, and then either they decide sometime down the road they want it, or, you know, they sell their house, or whatever. How, like, how would that work? What would the costs look like then?
So, that's one of the incentives of being a part of the LID. But if you move into the neighborhood and decide, you know, you're three years after the LID, you would have to pay the fixed cost of the install. So, if your house happens to be within LID 1, and at the close of LID 1, the cost wound up being, you know, $3,600 per home, you would have to pay the $3,600, and you'd have to pay that as a lump sum.
Okay, got it. Yeah, thanks for the clarification on that. Yeah, I think that's all I got for now.
You've answered my questions, Chris, so go on to the next part, or, you know, maybe you're ready to put some conclusions in before we make a motion.
Well, I would like to just take a look, take a look at a couple of the charts that are included here. So, this is the estimated cost that was built by Entry Point. It has a lot of costs in here, some of which we don't necessarily do. But even if we did do all of these things, the cost winds up being about $3,600 for an install. This is the estimated. That, depending on interest rates and things like that, works out to be around $20, $21. This would be more or less, in my mind, a worst-case scenario, assuming we had to do all of these, all of these bits and pieces. Like, a hut is a pretty significant cost. Some of the professional services associated with it, again, are significant costs. So, this is a good example of the worst-case scenario. This, then, beyond that, behind, next, following that, is why the take rate is important. And this sort of goes to your question, Colby. As that, and Tom, as that take rate goes up, the costs come down. And this is, gives you an example of how the costs come down. So, if you go from 60% to 65%, the overall install cost goes down by about 200 bucks. So...
What is it at 70%?
At 70%, it comes down about $400.
Okay.
These greens kind of give you the ballpark. And so, it's really nice. This is, this is when we talk about people talking to their neighbors and trying to get them to sign up. That's a large portion of that. It benefits, it benefits everyone included on the network, in the LID, rather, by lowering that cost.
What was the take rate at Ammon? Did we ever get that information from them?
Their take rate is, they're greater than 60%. And it improves over time. So, the first year, your goal is more or less 60%. After that, you're hoping to get more than that. At this point, I think they're high 60s, I would guess. Maybe, Robert Peterson is on here, maybe he could speak to that real briefly.
Thanks, Chris. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
For their first LID, they were about 72%. And then, based on the area and the political temperature, it's been ranging 60% to 65%. So, they've been pretty consistent at the end, at the closeout of the LIDs. So, they've done very well.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, that helps a lot.
You're welcome.
And then I just wanted to touch on the projected cost, the total projected cost by Entry Point. When we talked about this in November, I think my number was a little bit higher than this, but it's much easier to offer a number that's comprehensive, I think. This is a fully qualified number, close to 7.5 million. It assumes, it assumes the numbers earlier in the presentation as far as the cost per premise drop, 3,600, and a 10-year build. I don't know if anybody's interested in hearing about the overall design of the network, how it actually functions. You guys will have to let me know if that's something you're interested in hearing about. I can speak on passive optical networks and active networks all night long. I'm going to take that as a no.
So, Chris, could you mainly give us just like a three-minute, real quick summary of fiber optic is an active, I assume, right? It's...
So, my recommendation is an active network. The best example that I can give you to, for you to easily visualize it is picture the city buildings as they stand today. They are all, are being connected via fiber. And basically, for example, the airport and the police department are on one leg of the existing conduit. And they connect back into City Hall on a single piece of fiber, a single piece of glass. And that communication, when it hits City Hall, goes into a network switch, basically just a port on a switch. And then that switch connects up to our connection to the Internet. That's effectively the design of this network. It's, in its most generic description, a one-to-one connection between the endpoint, the airport, or the PD, in this case, and City Hall. And then City Hall connects out to the Internet. So, it's a very simple and straightforward network design. The beauty of, part of the beauty of it is that it is such a simple concept at its heart.
Thanks. Council, I'm going to poll you to see if you feel like you've got enough information from Chris. I'd like to know if you're, if you feel like you've got enough information and would like to proceed to making a decision on the master plan. So, Tom, what are your thoughts?
Oh, yeah, I've got plenty of info.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
I am on board with proceeding.
Melanie?
I'm also on board with proceeding.
Colby?
Yeah, I'm on board with proceeding as well. I'm just trying to look at all the numbers again here on, I guess, go over again. You know, we have that estimated cost of, what is it, 7.5 million for the build-out? Is, that's for like the putting the conduit in the grounds, building the framework? Or what does that, that cost?
So, we have, at the end of this summer, we will have substantially the backbone, if you will, in the ground. We would then, that cost, that 7.5 million dollar cost would effectively be the distribution into the neighborhoods and the connection of the homes, the fiber to the home itself, the actual physical fiber to the home.
Gotcha. And then we're able to recoup some of that cost through the connection fees and the... I was looking around, it felt like I saw something in here. It kind of showed that, but I, there's a lot of numbers going on.
So, if you recall, through the, through the LID, effectively, we outlay the construction costs at the beginning of the year and do the build, and at the end of that year, sell the, sell it, sell it to a bond, recouping the annual costs each year. The city recoups the LID costs each year.
Got it, yeah, thanks for the clarification on that. I was trying to remember how that all worked out. I'm good.
Thanks, Colby. I'm good.
If I may, Mayor, I do have additional CIPs for some smaller backbone build-outs going forward, but the next one's not until 2022. And then it would be on a sort of an as-needed basis. Um uh uh and then it would be on a sort of a, 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 an as-needed basis.
Yeah. So Chris, we had budgeted an hour before you, but I don't wanna um cut you short. If there's anything else you or your consultants would like to share with us, we're, we're fine with that.
Um I would, if, I would love to answer questions if there are any questions about the actual master plan itself. Uh any of the in, interesting portions like the community engagement plan? Um uh or any of the financial or legal considerations, I think, would be the things that would be of most interest.
Okay, I did one pass through and my, most, it sounds like most of the council does not have questions, but let me open it up to your very direct question. Counsel, anyone like to ask some more questions of Chris on those issues?
No, not at this time.
None for me.
I'm good.
Well, uh do, do you feel like that's, that's something that we should probably hear from you about? Maybe we could have other questions on the, the legal and the uh public outreach, et cetera? Is that, is that something that you would kind of like to discuss?
Well, I can, I can describe to you the, the uh steps going forward. Um at this point, um once the master plan is a, a adopted, uh we would begin work on um the judicial proceedings, which would be um a judicial review uh to give us uh tacit authority to uh provide this uh fiber utility. The reason for that is that legislation in the state has not yet agreed to include fiber utilities uh in the, in the actual verbiage of the, of the, the current um governing resolution. There is still a discussion that that will happen in the, in the fall. And uh I have been working with several other uh municipalities uh toward a coordinated effort to uh help push that through, but we don't know when that will, will happen for sure. Uh the next step, of course, would be uh the, the building of the, of the actual L I D and mostly of the legal aspects of the L I D. Uh I would be working with, I imagine with Bill Nichols as well as uh Christian um uh from U S Bank, I can't remember his last name, uh and with Linda, of course. Um and then um it's, it's a, 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 a marketing plan uh surrounding that. And we outlined um uh Aaron put together a pretty spectacular plan that includes some outreach to the community in, in many different forms. Some of them is me standing in front of a group explaining the project. Uh there's, there's online marketing and banner ads, there's direct mail, um any, any number of, of ways that we would do some of those things. Um I think we've seen pretty, uh pretty readily that, that uh Aaron's, Aaron's take on marketing for the city is, is very effective. So that would be, that, that would be effectively our next steps.
Got it. Thanks. And I guess to, with the, with the state legalities, do you see, foresee any issues we might face there?
There seems to be, there's, so what, what, what we're really uh fighting against is a little bit of the incumbents pushing back against us, us being the municipalities and wanting to do uh projects like this. But um there seemed to be a, a, a strong uh acceptance of adding that uh verbiage. It was, uh the, the most of the challenge was surrounding uh competition. And uh the important point that we make, we, the municipalities make, is that we are not in the, interested in competition in any way, shape or form. We're interested in uh uh building a utility that the, that the community owns that provides us with the best service at the best price. So that's a, that's a, uh I, 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 I am cautiously optimistic, but nobody, nobody is ever quite sure what politicians will do.
What you had shared with us, Chris, that some site-specific legislation like for Ammon, they're, they're operating legally and their municipality owns their fiber.
Yes, because they did a, they performed their own judicial review. If we get this legislation, we would not need to do a judicial review.
Right, but that, that's my point. If that's the backup position is to do what Ammon and other communities did.
Yes, absolutely.
I guess uh along the lines of the, the incumbents when um when we go to, you know, move into these phases, how, you know, how likely is it that we'll know what, what they're actually gonna be charging folks for uh providing the, the service?
So our best, our best um uh uh information on that is what is actually happening around the state in places that are, they're doing this, most specifically Ammon. And in Ammon, you can get, it's interesting, actually. Uh you can get a, a gig connection from uh several different providers. One provider offers it for nine dollars and ninety nine cents a month. Uh there's another provider who offers it for uh close to a hundred dollars a month. And somewhat surprisingly, they get about equal subscription rates. Some people perceive the value of the, of the gig speed to the internet uh at a hundred dollars a month and, and figure they're getting, getting something less at nine dollars and ninety nine cents a month. So um I, I would expect ours, I, I, I estimate ours closer to fifteen uh for, for the number that I'm, that I give to people. Um but if you look at what Ammon's getting, you can get it for closer to ten.
Sure. I, I suspect in the, the public outreach, that would prob, is probably gonna be the biggest variable in the the, the thing to try to nail down when you're trying to sell folk on it, you know? Um that, cause I mean, eventually they could still charge the same amount of money and then still have to pay for the, you know, the city services on top of it. I'm assuming that's not likely, but I think that, you know, that having that, uh you know, you can find that number or some numbers from the, the providers that would probably help in the sales.
Right, the market, the market takes care of itself.
Chris, this is Bob out. Isn't that one of the things you're trying to find out from the pilot study?
That is also part of the pilot study. Yes, exactly.
I mean, that was my understanding is that you get this up and running and sure, we don't know the buy-in rate and the take rate or whatever you call it. We don't know the exact installation. But one thing you will know is the, what the provider's charging.
Yep.
So that'll be great information and hopefully it'll be, you know, in line with what you're thinking it is.
Yes.
Okay.
Um then I, I guess I have one more question about, you know, I've been looking at this map. There's a whole lot of dark space on there in, in really pretty core of the city. Um and this is um what's, I'm looking at the phase, looking at the phase plans with that. Um so what's highlighted is with the, the ten-year plan.
I think I projected out about six years.
Six years? Okay. That's kind of what it's getting at. I feel like uh kind of curious is what, what it would take to, to kind of fill in those gaps. I mean, how, you know, say, say things go well and people are interested in it. Um what, what do you see in the future? Like, how long would it take to kind of cover our city?
I think we can get the majority of the city in about ten years. Um I, as I, uh, uh, I think I mentioned earlier, it, it, it doesn't end in ten years. It doesn't ever really stop. Um it's just a function of uh filling, basically what you're saying, filling in those areas that haven't been uh hit yet. So I, I don't see it, I don't see it ever stopping. I was just trying to give us a good horizon for, for a, for a build plan.
Sure, yeah. I was just kind of curious about like how much longer it would take to, to kind of fill in, fill in those gaps.
So the nice thing is at the end of that ten-year span, that uh uh utility is generating of, of uh almost three quarters of a million dollars annually. So then the, the will to build, if you will, is, is uh, is much easier to stomach. It's self-supporting at that point.
Great. I think that's uh, that's all I got for now.
All right. Um would someone from the council please make a motion to approve Resolution twenty dash fifteen as listed and read the wording in the agenda bill, please?
Bob, this is Melanie. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Department of Water Resources application for, oh wait, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Dude, sorry.
No problem.
Um like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty dash fifteen adopting the twenty twenty Rapid Broadband Master Plan and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you, Melanie. Is there a second?
Mike, second.
Thank you, Mike. A motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution twenty dash fifteen, adopting the twenty twenty Rapid Broadband Master Plan and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. May I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Holm?
Yes.
Councilmember Matecik?
Yes.
Mayor Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes. And uh Chris Curtin and your consultants, thank you for doing a really good job of bringing us a uh a really good master plan. I look forward to getting started on that.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate your time.
All right. Our next item is the COVID nineteen update. And Annette and Chief Williams will help us with that.
Okay, good evening, counsel. Um I think this will be a fairly quick update and a little bit of a preview or segue into the upcoming meeting schedule as well. So I'll turn it over to Justin to get us kicked off.
Good evening, counsel, mayor, Justin Williams, chief of police. Uh so the normal update and briefing that we have, last week or the last meeting on July ninth, there were nine thousand four hundred and twenty-eight infections statewide. Currently, we sit at sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-six. So that's a seventy-eight percent increase in the last two weeks. And we're continuing to see more and more infections every day. Uh we will remain in stage four, according to the governor's most recent uh press conference, extended to August seventh. So we will remain in stage four through August seventh. Currently, there are thirty-nine infections in the city of McCall uh that are listed as residents, but there, I believe, are over sixty confirmed uh tests positive within uh the city. So uh the mandatory mask resolution, there's going to be a uh meeting next week to extend that resolution and make a couple of changes to it to uh facilitate uh enforcement as needed. And then uh we're going to recommend to council that we continue to do remote meetings, uh hold them remotely through the end of August, such as we're doing right now, and maintain the, the, the status quo on this through the end of August. Uh most likely with the spikes that we're seeing, we're gonna continue to stay in stage four, most likely through the entire month of August.
So um to expand on that a tiny bit, I sat on a call today that included St. Luke's McCall. And uh the current number um system-wide just for St. Luke's is that there's eighty-four hospitalized and nineteen of those are in the ICU. And um I'm sorry, there's like a thing that popped up here. Um for the McCall area, at our hospital here, they have fifty-nine positive tests locally with thirty-three tests still waiting for results to come back. Um in the Cascade area, they report a ten percent positive test rate is occurring. And the goal um across the country is to try to have a five percent positive test rate or less. So we still have um some challenges with the, with the um um spread of the virus in Idaho. Um so we have um talked internally about uh thinking ahead to next Friday, which is the day, the last day that your current mask resolution is in place. And wanted to talk to you tonight, and that's the segue into the upcoming me, meeting schedule about um holding a special council meeting on Tuesday evening um for you to discuss whether or not you would like to extend that resolution another thirty days. And then we can also um fine-tune it a little bit for the enforcement side um to make it a little easier for Justin and his crew to do the enforcement piece. So um we'll pause here and see if you have any questions about the situation generally. And if you don't, then we can move into the upcoming meeting schedule item and um talk about that.
No questions?
I, I have none. Thank you.
It's Mike. So we need to consider a special meeting as to what we're gonna do with the public health order?
Correct. If, if you think that you may want to discuss um an extension of the timeframe that it's um in effect for, because it expires next Friday, I would recommend that you do it early in the week so that there's time for us to get the education materials out again. Um and then also Bill Nichols is available Tuesday or Wednesday, but we know as staff that Wednesday is a difficult day for some of our counselors to meet. And so that's why we were proposing Tuesday at five. Um if that works for people.
So I, I, that doesn't work for me, Annette, but um Colby can run the meeting as um council president if the other, if, if four people can attend.
Well, would Thursday be an option or no?
Thursday is an option for me. I'm available Thursday.
Do we need to, in discussing this, um does it have value to have further input from the healthcare community, for instance, as to um the, that decision in that meeting?
Yes, I would reach out to um Central District Health in St. Luke's and Cascade Medical Center if they were interested to see if they're available to provide you an update um on just sort of the facts of the situation so you have some updated um dialogue with them. Yeah.
Cause I think that um my understanding is that damp and meridian um ICUs are close to capacity or there, I think that uh what we understand in our community is that there are, of all the tests that St. Luke's has processed, that um St. Luke's only processes tests if the person has symptoms.
Correct.
There's a high likelihood that of all those tests that St. Luke's still has pending, that those are all positive. There are also significantly more. And there's also with St. Luke's uh right now, it's, you know, the time to get the test back is seven or eight days for the average person, whether they go to Rite Aid, um asymptomatic, or whether they go to St. Luke's and they have symptoms. Um I think it's fairly safe to say that the number of cases in our community is are significantly higher than what we're seeing in the numbers. So personally, I think it's in supporting our healthcare community, our business, and heard an overwhelming response from the vast majority of our community that this is probably important to consider a special meeting on Thursday. That would be my take on it.
Mm-hmm. So um one more, just small bit of information. I will not be here next week, but I know Justin and Bessie Jo and Bill Nichols can. So one more, just small bit of information. I will not be here next week, but I know Justin and Bessie Jo and Bill Nichols can help you through it without me. No problem.
How's the rest of the council feel? Would they be available for a Thursday meeting?
I'm good with that, Bob.
Thank you, Melanie. Colby, would you be able to attend that?
I think so.
Okay, Tom?
Ask me Wednesday.
Yeah, Thursday works well. Have we, have we picked out a time or tried to look at what time?
We typically do those at 5:00, but you know, if there's a better time, if you want it earlier in the day or in the later.
Thursday would be perfect.
10:00 AM.
For Bill, it, it needs to be in the later, after 4:00 sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
So how about Thursday at 5:00 PM? Does that work for the five of us?
That works for me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll have Bessie Jo get the notice out and we would do the same as we did before with submission of written comments by a certain time and get those compiled for you and sent out. I think we'll look at having the cutoff a little earlier in the day, maybe at noon, so that Bessie Jo has a little more time to get all of that together and sent out to you, if that's okay.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, great. And so the rest of, did you have anything else, Justin, on that topic? Okay, so for the rest of the upcoming meeting schedule, we have our special work session tomorrow that's at 9:00 AM and that's a joint session with P&amp;Z and the county code update training. And then we're going to go into the budget process with Linda. And our goal tomorrow with that is to set the cap or the maximum amount of the budget levy by the end of that so that we can meet the deadline of the county. And then, as you just discussed, please note on your calendar, Thursday, July 30th at 5:00 for a special meeting, just on that public health order. And then we go into August. And today I had a request from ITD to present to you on August 13th about the highway safety reconstruction project that will start this fall between Smith Ferry and the Rainbow Bridge. So that should be pretty interesting. And then your August 27th meeting, Lake Shore Disposal contacted me and would like to make a presentation to you about recycling update, their contract and their proposal for a rate freeze for the, for the clients in the McCall area. So that should be good as well. I don't know if you have any questions about anything else that was already listed in your packet or if there's other items that you would like to get on the agenda, the future agenda?
Tom, you good with the future agenda that we have in the packet?
Yes, it looks okay.
Mike, you okay with what we have?
I am, thank you.
Melanie?
I'm good.
Colby?
Yeah, it looks good to me.
I think we're good with that, Annette.
Okay, thank you.
If, if I could ask a question of Bill Punkinney, I just wanted to in, and make sure that we are good with our virtual platform as far as the open meeting law goes. As we plan to continue the virtual meetings into August, are we good with that?
Yeah, so, so far the governor has extended the ability for us to do this. And, you know, I've attended a lot of open meetings via Zoom and via Teams. And I really like the way that, that you guys proceed by identifying votes and sort of moving around and making sure everybody has an identified time to speak. It's, it's well organized. So Bessie Jo, I mean, I guess to answer your question, for now, and as long as the, the governor's continues to extend the suspension of the open meeting law, partial suspension of the open meeting law, yeah, I think we're okay. And if that, you know, is not the case, then certainly you'll be our first stop and, and we'll work on what we need to do to start having meetings by another means. And, you know, even if the governor no longer has his current executive order in place, there's, there's a provision that exists in the Idaho code that we're meeting because the mayor is at this, at the meeting location now. So we can conduct the meeting via telecommunication and just have one elected official present. So we have options even if the governor's executive order goes away.
Thank you.
Thanks for that question and answer. I think we're for, ready for a motion to adjourn? Or was there anything else that, that I missed, Annette?
I think you're good.
Would someone please make a motion to adjourn?
This is Mike, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Melanie. All in favor, aye? Anyone opposed to adjourned? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.